All right, let's call to order the work session. Today is Tuesday, December 2nd, we're meeting in the hearing room on Melody Lane. Order deletion of any item on this agenda subject to modification. At the meeting, any item listed is open for discussion. Please note that detachments, the attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. Meeting presentation materials displayed at the board may differ slightly from the attached versions. Members of the board will attend either in person or by remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board of supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with roll call, District 1.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Crosby is here.
All right, District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3, Anthony is here, all three supervisors are present, Mr. Crosby attending remotely. Uh, let's go, uh, first to, I guess, introductions who we all got here.
Uh, so with us today from Public Works, we have Josh Steinberg in the audience there, Jessica Moore, Admin Manager, Robert Hill, Solid Waste Superintendent, and Fred Nixon, Highway Superintendent, myself, Jason Fosse, Public Works Director.
Okay, so we will go to Agenda Item Number 1, we'll take it straight to you, Mr. Fosse, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, basically, we're gonna cover all three divisions. We have a little bit more time than I'd like to spend in these hallways, so we'll run through a couple of these fairly quickly. Uh, just to give you a quick update on the fleet, uh, we were supposed to have 17 vehicles. We ordered 17, we've received 12 to date on the light fleet side of stuff. Heavy fleet, uh, we did receive the chip locks that we had budgeted for, and the motor grader, uh, currently sits over at the heavy fleet shop waiting to be put to work. Uh, I think they're waiting for some stickers and some things that have to be done through procurement currently. Uh, the Highside Scraper Trailer has been received and it is in use currently. And we are finding, uh, through that conversation we had about recycling, we are able to haul more material to Tucson than we were previously, so we're gonna start saving some money there. Um, we have a second Highside Trailer that's a possible grant. Uh, once we hear something from ADQ, if we were able to get that grant, obviously, we'll bring that to the board.
The money from the tipping fees that we send up there coming back? Or is that another revenue?
It could be a portion of it, I don't know.
All right.
But, uh, you know, they offered this grant, so we jumped in. Uh, Josh Steinberg actually has written some grants before, and so he's kind of been heading that up with, uh, uh, Robert and Jessica.
Get some of those fees back.
Be nice.
Uh, the Aljon Solid Waste Compactor, uh, we did rebuild the engine in that.
That's the one that catch on fire?
Uh, no, this one didn't catch on fire, we just got a tired engine.
Catch on fire?
Uh, we've been doing simple things, catch on fire, but...
Burned up or something?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember.
Some of the trash underneath the compactor.
Yeah, we did have, oh, I'm sorry, yes, so the compactor, two different compacters. So the compactor that packs the trash into the trailers at the transfer station, that had a fire in it.
Okay.
This is a wheeled compactor that rolls the trash at the landfill.
Oh, like the thing I was talking about on the road out off of Middle March Road.
Yeah, it has bikes on it, it's one of those.
I saw that out there, I was like, oh, that, okay, gotcha.
Take that road.
That was one of the things we talked about in the budget, where we, where we put money aside to rebuild that engine. So we did that, and that machine's now running, it's, it's getting into its break-in period. Actually, I think we're probably two-thirds of the way through its break-in period. Uh, we also have a cardboard baler, uh, that grant has been approved. We're working through the weeds on some things, it's, it's just finalizing some details. That baler, we're intending on putting in Douglas. Once everything is solid there, we'll also be coming to the board for approval to accept that grant as well. Uh, right now, we're just kind of finalizing some details with the grant tour.
Okay.
Hopefully, that goes forward and we'll get a new baler in Douglas. Help us out with the recycling over there. Ordering in progress, right now, we're waiting on, uh, uh, brush hog for the airport mower up in Wilcox, so...
A six-foot? That's tiny.
Yeah, they have a fairly small farm tractor up there, uh, that we budgeted and bought for Dan, the...
You guys usually have those big ones that I...
Yeah, so Development Services has a couple smaller mowers at the airports. And so one of them is for a mower out there. The airports have obviously shifted now, uh, so this is being purchased for garland facilities. All right, that covers fleet.
And when you talk about light fleet, you're talking about like...
Could that be the car you drive?
Right.
All the Sheriff's Department vehicles?
You gotta find out what's...
Come get yourself in the auction.
Yeah.
Come get you get rid of.
So the auction's currently...
What's still going on?
Yeah, December 14th.
Yeah, it's currently running.
Oh, okay.
So I'll have an update for you probably in a few hours.
Just curious, I didn't know if that was still going.
I'm sorry.
Those tires on these fleet cars either are on hard, on tires or something.
I mean, we have good luck with some and not...
And that's not...
Others and, uh...
Wheel alignment.
Typically, we have pretty good luck with our tires.
Except, except for me.
Well, the sensors, I think, is where we had an issue on your vehicle.
We have one on this one now that you gave me.
Are you on your...
Yeah, no, I'm in that, no, I'm in the other one.
In the longer?
Which I like a lot better.
Where is it?
It's a Traverse.
Yeah.
Oh, Chevy Traverse.
So it's a little bit, it's even better on mileage, surprisingly enough.
What was the other one you had?
Uh, the smaller one, Equinox. But that, the transmission went out on me. And it's only 71,000 miles.
Yeah, we seem to be having a lot of problems with some of the newer vehicles. The emissions issues that they're giving us, uh, they wind up back at the dealer lot. Valve train issues with, uh, GM has been an issue. Transmissions are going through, like, every manufacturer that has having transmission issues because they're trying to, uh, use newer technology that creates better fuel mileage, things like that.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I was driving out in the middle of nowhere. It does agree.
Toyota's Hyalux trucks. I gotta...
They're not American.
You can't, yeah, you can't bring them in, you can't even import them, they gotta be 25 years old. But those things are like tanks, they're bulletproof, man.
Mm-hmm.
That is like the vehicle that you can't stop. We can't have them here. Especially the 6D diesel. That's, and it's the truck of terrorists worldwide. Cause you can shoot them with every kind of bullet and they'll finger, they'll drive away. I saw a 2,000-pound bomb hit one and it drove away. I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding, you can't destroy those damn things, that's an unbelievable truck.
Yeah, right.
Too bad we can't switch, but yeah, whatever. Chevy versus Toyota Hyalux.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, we, we work on every manufacturer out there and they all have frozen tongs and they have some issue somewhere or another.
All right, we're mostly GM though, right?
Yeah, we do have boards and we have, we have some oddball stuff out there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not even like the mainstream brands, you know?
Yeah, shit.
Or the, I know this is a little off-topic, but the Ford Raptors that the sheriff got, are they bending like the other ones I hear, the border patrols are bending in half?
I haven't heard of any bending, uh, Border Patrol does a lot of desert, you know, where they're patrolling and they're hitting ditches and stuff, because they're not on the roads all the time. Our Sheriff's Department typically is on the road, so they're...
Okay, but I've been reading a lot about how their Raptors are bending in half, the, the frames are bending.
We haven't had that, uh, issue yet.
Oh, okay, I was just curious, I was curious. You know, they don't Baja 500 with their trucks.
I, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
I could keep a bat shot out there now, lofting up in a Middle March Road somewhere.
Oh, boy, that road's never gonna go away.
All right, so on the highways update, uh, one of the things that we wanted to bring to your attention is we're bringing the county up with, with many other counties. Uh, our Public Works Department has created an Adopt a Roadway program. And so basically what that is, is like you have trash cleanup. Yes, people will be able to pick up trash. That's something that we'll bring to you at the next board meeting for a vote, and I believe that'll be a resolution that you'll be voting on.
And it's interesting because I just had on Davis Highway, Fred Davis, he came to me about all the trash, I didn't see it, but you know, they were questioning why we don't have the prisoners anymore going out there, and I talked to Sharon, and I guess the whole prisoner cleanup thing was a problem, problematic.
It was.
Overseeing it and stuff.
So, uh, highways, did highways ever use inmates?
I don't think for cleanup, we...
No.
Highways, highways never did.
We use them for solid waste.
Yeah.
And we use them in facilities.
So solid waste did have, so the solid waste department, uh, used to have inmates for cleaning up wind blown litter.
And what about for the, for the highways?
We did, we did, we use them.
That they have in the past, would have been before.
And was it just problematic overseeing it, is that why we stopped it?
Well, some of it was agreeing with the state and their IGAs that they were throwing out, especially around COVID, there was some issues, I know.
And even since then, the state's IGA has gotten pretty restrictive from what I understand because the, the oversight that we have to have while they're out in the field.
Certain category of team that you can only use, right?
Because people write bad, bad checks and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah. Do they, do they, do they give them like time off if they work?
They give them a, I don't know.
It's like for every eight hours you work, you get an hour off your sentence?
No, what we were using was inmates that, uh, they, they...
They should do that.
They got paid like 50 cents an hour, and then 30 cents of that would go to the state or something for their restitution and things like that. They would have things that they had to pay out of that, but it doesn't shorten their term at all that I'm aware of.
No, I mean, you could certainly look at it again to see if there's any changes in their procedure.
Who do we talk to about that?
Because it works.
But they...
No, but there aren't inmates though.
No, no, they're Department of Correction inmates. They're not, not a jail inmates, no, we don't use them.
Oh, this is from the prison, PDI.
Oh, I'm talking about our jail.
Yeah, no, we don't do that.
Why don't you use our jail?
They're not there that long.
It's what?
They're not there that long and they have port dates and they have to be.
Oh...
And I think the Sheriff's Department does, I, I wouldn't want to speak to them.
They'd probably use them for cooking in the kitchen and cleaning up their own jail.
Shops that they give them on at the jail?
Well, maybe at the jail, but not out in the county.
Right.
Can we look at that? Because even like I was thinking of cleaning up the turtle, that community is pretty old. They're like, when you saw them, I mean, they're like 70 and older, and a lot of them can't even lift the stuff. Is there a possibility of just looking at it?
We can certainly reach out to Department of Corrections.
You gotta pay 50 cents an hour.
And how much it would cost and what...
Pay 50 cents on that.
What our responsibilities would be, and oversight. I think that was the major concern was that we didn't have the staff to, that we're trained appropriately to oversee them. And there was...
The other catch is, we don't pay 50 cents an hour. We actually pay a way higher wage than that, they get 50 cents an hour from the...
Oh, so you gotta pay the stance.
Yeah.
We were paying a lot more than, we were paying like minimum wage for these guys.
What?
We'd rather get jobs in the county.
Douglas managed to just pay, because Douglas and Cyrus are having a fight with the inmates because Cyrus keeps upping it like a dollar 25, and then Douglas is giving it a dollar 50, but they pay a dollar 50, they don't pay...
I don't know what the IGAs are exactly, I don't know what they pay. I just know we weren't paying the 50 cents, we were paying a much higher rate. And then if they brought the bus to bring them, we were paying for the bus, we were paying for the driver, we were paying for insurance and all kinds of things.
Yeah, so how does the cities get away with not having to do that?
I don't know if it's because the city is, you know, a smaller geographical area. We have them going out into the county from the Douglas prison, it's a further drive, so we have to pay. And sometimes they're not coming from the Douglas prison, you know, sometimes Stafford, you can see other... So...
What I would suggest is maybe we look into it.
We am.
The one thing that I would consider looking into, and I would be happy to do this, is uh, having them managed by their own DOC crews, because it used to be that we had to manage them, and so our people had to meet certain criteria too, to even be on site. So if you had 30 guys working on the, in the yard and one of them the prison didn't like, you literally couldn't have inmates that day.
Well, it's weird because, and that was another issue, was the consistency and reliability of the program.
You just gotta go out and buy a bunch of shotguns and mirrored sunglasses and hand them out to...
At the hospital, we use them all the time, the inmates from Douglas. And it, they, they had their own guys to oversee them, we never had to, as the hospital, do that. So I mean, it might just be worth looking into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do the cost analysis on it again, bring it up to date.
Yeah, I personally managed hundreds of them and, and it was a lot of work, it was a lot more work than it seems.
How many of you jump preschool kids to go out there if you gotta pay minimum wage anyways?
Right, that's, that's...
That's gotta be liability.
We came to the idea of, well, why not...
Get their parents to sign the, the release.
So you're doing this Adopt a Highway where, I mean, the cleanup of the lanes?
So what we did is, what I think is a little bit different about ours, the Adopt a Roadway, and the reason we did that is they can even adopt a dirt road if they want. And so we have people right now in the county that do this, and we'll give them bags and then we'll send a crew out to go pick up the bags. We just don't have anything formally written up for this yet. This has been through the attorney's office. Uh, we've had several attorneys look at it, administrations looked at it. I think it's gonna be a really good program. It gives an opportunity for the people that are doing it now to have, it'll be formal, they can put a sign up with their name on it saying that, you know, the family, this family's taking care of this two-mile stretch or whatever.
So I was going on, I stopped at Central Davis, and there was a, a guy mowing or weed whacking the corns. And I pulled over and I said, hey, you know, thank you very much. And I said, what's your name, you know, like, he goes, oh, it doesn't matter, just it's better this way. And I guess he does it all the time, so would that be something?
Yeah, I mean, they could be, uh, responsible for this section of road and they would be able to go out there and, you know, if they want to weed eat around the signs or whatever, it's, it's focused around picking up trash though, for the poor.
Okay.
And then we would throw their name up on a sign, basically saying that this family or this person or this, uh, whatever would be responsible for that area. And they have a minimal time, I think it's, the minimum time is a year, two years. So if they adopt it, it's two years minimum, they're responsible for it.
Like, how often do they gotta go out there?
It's twice a year.
Oh, twice a year?
Yeah. We tried to make it, uh, similar to what our residents are already doing. I've been asked by residents, uh, about a program like this in the past, and I, you know, why not? You know, all the other counties are doing it, so, uh, we drafted this up, it went to the, uh, administration looked at it, it seemed to get a lot of positive feedback, uh, got positive feedback from the attorney's office, so we'll bring it to you guys and you guys can vote on it.
You know, Adopt a Roadway, get my name put up on a soon.
There you go.
Pre-advertising. There you go, go out there twice a year with some garbage bags and some tons? Pick up garbage?
Sometimes you find, you know, you find money, you find money and stuff.
So this is our Gantt chart we share. See, we, we do this once every quarter. What we did is, we, we had fallen behind like almost a year ago on how we were projecting our quarterly reports. So you'll notice that this one goes from the, this past quarter, and we didn't really touch base on that, that much, so I want to catch us up on that. But it's also pushing us out into the next quarter, so you guys kind of know what's coming in the future. So you can see those, those top bars of your maintenance grading and right-of-way mowing, and all of those bars are full because they're pretty much happening all year round in Bisbee, Douglas, Benson, and Wilcox Road Yards. So you'll see those bars are all the way out in all of those road yards. Uh, where we get into some of the detail stuff is like the striping is something that we just finished up, I believe. I think, I think yesterday or today, we're putting the last touches on our striping on all the county roads.
Yeah.
And so that's ending right there. And you can see where we did some hot mix on Richards Road, this would all be out of the Bisbee Road Yard, uh, Chip Seal Richards Road and Apache Point. We do have a washout repair on Gleason here that looks like it falls in this quarter.
On Gleason?
Yeah, so I, I can explain that, just so you know.
I just drove down the road, seemed fine to me.
So it got pushed in the next quarter. If you're driving down Gleason, uh, you'll see a barricade on the side of the road. And what happened was is the water traveled across the road and it gouged out the side of the road, so there's like a three or four-foot drop right at the edge of pavement. So we wouldn't want somebody to drive over there and fall. So we put a barricade and we'll be going back in there and filling that up with some material so that we don't have an incident.
Never noticed it.
Yeah, it's, it's hiding in the grass, we, we pay attention to that stuff and try to get them...
I pull off that road all the time.
Yeah, don't, don't pull off where the barricade is, right?
Glass, those ridge lines for deer.
Uh, we have some other winter projects that are forecasted, and that's the concrete wash repair on Madura. Uh, we have some guard rail replacement on the Hurford Bridge and out on Purdy Lane. And we're gonna be staging and hauling chip. We're still waiting for some contract stuff to get done over in, uh, procurement. And that should start happening in January. And basically what happens there is we send the guys out with dump trucks in between these winter projects and start hauling chip and preparing for our chip seal season for the next year. And that way, we're not overwhelming these people that supply us with chip uh, in April when we can start chip sealing roads.
Speak, speaking of which, uh, Wilcox Rock and Sand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess you guys used to get chip from them and then we don't now?
We still can, it just, it just depends on if it passes specs. So it really depends on high-traffic, high-volume roads, uh, whether their chip's clean enough to pass spec. Whenever we chip seal a road, engineering, we, we really involve them in what we're doing so that we don't put together a road that's not gonna last. Engineering will go out and get a sample of the chip, and they'll let us know if that passes spec or not. If it passes, then we'll buy it. If it doesn't pass, we'll let Wilcox Rock and Sand know this is why it didn't pass. It either didn't have enough fractured faces on the chip, or it was too dirty, or whatever.
Do, do they have, obviously, a crusher that, that...
They do.
Does that, right, they have to set it a certain way?
If they do have...
How do they control how many fractured faces are on the...
That would be the, the expert, the subject matter expert of that plant. I've never crushed rock, so I wouldn't be able to tell you that. But I do know that most of the time that, that Wilcox Rock and Sand specifically, uh, they have had occasions where it's a little on the dirty side for us to use it on a high-traffic, I, you know, a high-traffic road, like Kansas City.
Okay.
Okay. So we do buy chip from them though, we have used them in the past, and we will continue using them for roads that we can get passed on. And we also had another vendor recently in Tombstone that passed, that's KB&amp;G. Uh, they bought some material from a mining company or something out there. They set up a crush, a crush plant out there. Engineering has, uh, given the green light on some of that chip, so that's one of the contracts we're waiting to get back to see if we can...
So they, they, they wash it post-crushing?
So, when it gets crushed and then it goes through a wash plant? I think they have, I have seen companies wash it and then crush it, but it doesn't come as clean that way because you still have some fines.
Crusher funds, yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh, Hot Mix Frontier in Washington, we got that done, that's down here in the Douglas, El Frito.
Washington, when you say Washington, is that Washington Avenue, what? Washington?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You did some on Washington Avenue.
Mm-hmm. Hot Mix.
Hot Mix, okay.
Yeah, which would be the same as the asphalt plant's gonna be making in Douglas in someday, like, when they fire up. We might be buying material from them to do, especially if it's in Douglas, so it makes sense.
Okay.
As long as it meets engineering specs, right? Um, this is the one you were talking about, uh, Turkey Creek. I, we put on there that we're hauling material, we didn't really talk about blading, but that is included in that. So we're basically gonna be hauling some maybe out there. We're gonna use the System 2000, which is the mission, what we were talking about. It's, it's not really a machine, it's a blade that goes on our, our player and has little carbide bits on it that grind the rocks that are sticking up. And we'll be blading some maybe, we'll also be using the System 2000 out there to get that road kind of back in shape.
Okay.
Which the road's not bad right now, um, we drove it, it's really not that bad for...
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to get out there. I did drive down, uh, Rucker recently.
Yeah, it's not that bad either, it's a little...
East, east, or, yeah, east of 191, yeah.
It's a little washboarded, but it's not that bad.
We'll go do that too.
Um, again, we have the hauling and staging chip, that, that is gonna be on each one of these road yards, just so you know, because like I said, we kind of work that in as we can. Uh, Hot Mix on Gleason, we have a, a patch out there that's coming up, so we're gonna go in there and cut that section out and put in a good, a good piece of road. Uh, same with Davis, we have some road out there that, we've gone out there cold patched it a few times, it's just folding, so we're gonna remove that section of road, make sure the subgrade is good, and then we'll put in a good hot mix patch. Uh, Oak Teal Road, Flower Road, Benson Airport, this is, uh, sand removal. And this is basically what happens is during monsoon season, the sand will build up on the road. We go out and clear the road, but that sand builds up on the sides, so we'll go out and clean that as a winter project.
I, I see it all the time where the, the asphalt or the chip seal is here and then there's two feet of sand on each side.
Yeah, so we'll go out and clean that stuff up, we'll put it in dump trucks and haul it off, so that's...
Well, the minute it rains, it's just gonna wash the, you gotta go upstream.
And we can only go so far, and then it's not our land anymore, so, yeah.
How about, how about, can you put a silt barrier there so just the water runs over the road?
Uh, what, what control might be able to answer some of that, but I, that would be more flood controls, wheelhouse. Once it's out of our right of land.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, I got you. It's, it seems something to hold back all that sand, but, yeah. It would just build up there and then eventually come over into base.
Yeah. Um, we do have a project out there on Civil Road where we're gonna do some concrete rip raft and slurry to repair some, where it washes out on the side of the road.
Hmm.
Uh, as you know, Kansas City only got chipped. I had mentioned that at one of the earlier work sessions that we were gonna try to double chip that. We were not able to obtain enough chip to double chip it, so it wound up with a single chip. We'll try to get back on it maybe and re-chip it in another year or so.
I drove down it, uh, again this past week, and there's a section there, as you get closer to Wilcox, where the little yellow tabbies that are in the middle of the road, and then the guy that painted the line was like off like a foot and a half, and he's back in. So I don't know, is he supposed to paint?
It's a sticky stomp there.
Sticky stomps that... Those are wrong?
Those are wrong, yes.
Okay, the lines are right.
Yeah, so basically, we have a guy walk the road with sticky stomps, and he puts those down to kind of give us a bearing on the middle of the road while we're chip sealing.
Okay.
And so when residents are running down the road, those are a temporary, like, they'll fall off in a couple, in a few months.
I was just saying, I was just noticing, it's just like, you know, you saw the deviation where they're on the yellow thing and then all of a sudden sectioned, it was like a foot and a half off, and then it came, came back, and it just looks funny when you look down the road because you'd see that, the yellow, 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 and then the, the little break apart and then come back together section.
Yeah, I told the guy, start trying to run over him so they'll pull off the road.
Yeah, yeah.
So anything that's paved is considered a highway for the county, right?
Yeah, so anything we maintain has to be an adopted county highway, yes.
Okay. I was driving between that and the dirt roads, which are county maintenance roads, and these are highways.
They're adopted down the highways too, most of our dirt roads too, aren't they? We have a lot of them, right, that are dirt?
They're, they're, they're not declared county highways.
None of our dirt roads are?
I know one that is.
Which one is that?
Boulder and True, yeah.
Oh, Millman's what?
It's not declared county highway, but it is a county highway by statute if it was there between 1960 and 1927. There's just, so highway doesn't mean highway like if you think of a state highway. Highway in the past, you know, was just the name of a road, a road. It doesn't mean that it's functioning as a highway, right?
Okay.
But they're public roads. Um, there will, there will be a memo coming out to you guys that explains it more, that Bert did, yeah.
So what, what do we, we call them, we, we, should we just call them roots? Traditional term? It's traditional, it's confusing.
It is confusing.
Yeah, there's not, there's nothing... It's not a declared county highway. Declared is an action that the board did. County highways can still be a county highway, county road, public road. That's by statute if it was there for so long, but not declared, but accepted into maintenance.[1606.11]
Okay.
Yeah.
No way I understand it, but that's all right.
There's more to come on that.
Yeah.
You'll be.
Okay.
You'll be dragged into.
The, um, cause.
Sure you get emails on it.
The next, this is a thing to think of when we do our work session is, you know. Um, we've had, was it the guys on Kimball and it was, uh. When I talked to you right before Thanksgiving, right?
Oh, yeah.
What I wanted to think about is everyone, even my brother-in-law said, I would rather have the road maintained before, uh, you know. November, when I'm shipping out the cattle, not in August, and it would be better if you're gonna do it like in Octo- November or October and then in spring. And I just want you to think about when we have that work session, how that works.
The case. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So we had some storm issues out there that flooded the road and caused.
Was that the recent storms you're talking about?
No, it was during monsoons.
Okay.
So then we went out and bladed. We got the road back in shape because we got phone calls about the road. So then we went and maintained it. And it's a permanent road. So then we basically start over with the six months because we're supposed to blade it every six months.
Right.
But then we got another call after it rained again. So we went out two months later and bladed again. And then you got the call literally a month after that. So.
I don't know how we get control of this. This is like a very.
To just stick as best, as best we can. We have to go out and we have to make sure the road is by statute. We have to make sure that the road is. Passable, right? We don't want anybody getting hurt. We don't wanna create liability for the county.
So if they say, I don't want you to come out in the summer, even after the monsoons, because they can blade it themselves. We just want you to come out this time in that time. Is that something that creates too much liability for us?
We cannot create intentional. Uh, trying to think of how it's ordered in there. Basically like intentional liability. If we go out there and we know a road is bad.
You still have to fix.
We have to go fix.
Even if it's five times in, on a permanent road, if it's bad, it's bad.
If it's, i- if it washes out to where it could cause somebody harm, we would wanna go out and address it. That's the way we've been doing it.
So I guess they called me, told me they did it themselves. Those guys.
They're not supposed to do that.
They're not supposed to do that.
Yeah.
So he says it was either that or they couldn't get their cattle out for sale. So I don't know.
They can get, they can get a permit from Jackie to blade the road, right? The dirt road. Um, and, and then they could go do it.
Whenever.
By policy, they could.
Okay.
Do you get to like certify a guy? A greater operator or something, a private creator out there or something?
No, but we do get a million dollar liability insurance.
Okay.
Have to have a certificate of insurance to do it and traffic control.
And we do have, we do have.
You send a guy out there to go look.
Yeah, see what they're done.
We don't currently. No. Issues the permit. We, we let them do their thing. Uh, usually engineering monitors what, what they're doing out there. We, we will send a guy once in a while. But we don't go out there like every day and look at what they're doing.
There's very few people that actually get permits to do what they do in the right of way. I mean.
Do you know the Kimball and I can't remember the names.
McDonald?
Huh?
McDonald?
No, it was the Kimball Ranch at Oaks, something Mud Oaks Ranch. Yes, you know. So, um, you said you had gone a couple of times and I mean. They were telling me this is gonna impact the three million dollars worth of accounts they were gonna send out. So I, I don't know how to get a handle on this.
But they said they hadn't seen us out there.
Right.
Like eighty days.
Yeah.
Eighty days is two and a half months. We're supposed to be out there for six. So they, they might've been close.
You could still get cows out. You could get cows out. I, I drove that road two weeks ago and.
And you could do it then. I, you know, it's he says, she says, they miss nothing.
You could.
So.
A cow truck could go down.
I remember the statute is we have to be deliberately negligent.
Okay.
Okay. So if we're being deliberately negligent, then. Maybe that almost sounds like we have to go out there and try to hurt somebody, but if we know there's something wrong out there, we're gonna try to address it. And I don't want the roads washboarded and their horse trailers are bouncing around. That's different than having a rut that a car can fall in and disappear.
So I was out hunting. I drove down your favorite road, Middle March Road. And when I came back, there was a grader out there. There was a, a wa- it rained. This was right after we had that winter. Uh, it had rained and it washed out. A tiny little section. I just drove right over with my truck, but I got a truck. And then we went up over the mountain. To Tombstone, stopped at Circle K, and we came back and it was fixed. And I was like, holy crap, who the hell was on that? Then all of a sudden the guy went with the grader, went flying by me with the grader. I guess he just drove up there and. Grated it and then drove, drove, drove back. I don't wanna get your guy in trouble. He did a good job. He did a good job, but he did go flying by me with that thing, man. A man after my own art.
They're not gonna get anybody in trouble. This is kind of something that I, I tried to put out there to you guys. Every time we have a work session and that is that our guys are gonna get the shirt off their back. Most of them. Are dealing and fixing these roads as they're needed. And they're on.
Christ, how fast it got.
The guys are really good.
Yeah.
They are. And they don't get the credit that they deserve sometimes. And I understand. I, I, I live.
How many graders do you have?
We have fifteen, I think.
They're like stationed in various areas and you have dedicated operators for each one?
We, we have at least an operator for each one and we usually have a backup operator for that area.
And you stick to that, like that guy stays in that area. You don't take him to go to Benson.
No.
You just.
I mean, we happen a rare situation where we've got somebody out on FMLA or something.
Yeah.
But I mean, you have, you have a guy out there that, that recounts the roads to say, hey, this road's bad. This guy's. And then get on the radio and he comes flying out with the grader, fixes it and.
Well, the supervisor inspects the roads and then they, you know, they go by logistics, obviously, and their schedule.
So I was trying to figure out how that guy knew to go fix that road, cause there was no truck there. It was just the grader.
Because we've been fixing the road for.
Oh, okay. I understand.
We just know which roads blow out. They probably knew which trench blew out depending on how much rain we get. So we get, uh, a rain gauge reading from engineering every time it rains and usually depending on how many inches fall.
Kinda know where to go.
Yeah, we know where to go. And so.
Well, Jackie took, I missed this one going over, but the, we did a tour of my favorite people who come and constantly tell me we have to do something. What was, I'm sorry, I'm just.
You've got a lot of exercise.
Hi, Mr. Paul. That road was so good, I couldn't even believe it. It's better than any other road everywhere. And I'm like, I don't understand what they're talking about, except when you go and you go way up.
Comparative perspective.
Yeah, when you, and, and the road that they give on is all the way up the freaking mountains. So, I don't know.
People, people compare, that's their perspective.
Yeah.
This is the bar, then this is where they want the road. If this is the bar, then this is where they want the road. So as long as you keep the bar down here.
Anything is improvement. I'm sorry, the difference.
They are. I appreciate the conversation. I mean, you know, oftentimes I think that it's a matter of just walking through some of this stuff so everybody understands.
I got you.
You, you know, we just did a bunch of road work out there. There's.
Where?
Uh, Bell Ranch.
Bell Ranch, okay.
You drove it. It's wonderful right now. Uh, there is a couple of sections that we're gonna have.
Beautiful section of road.
Uh, and some hot mix. There's a bunch of potholes right in the area, right in one little spot.
Then I took, at the curve, I took the dirt road across the Kansas settlement. Man, that road was bad. I don't know, I can't remember what road that was. It's like chip sealed like a hundred yards out from Kansas settlement and then it goes to dirt.
Heartfish ranch?
Yeah.
Heartfish ranch, that's the one with all the fissures on it. So we, we peeled the chip seal off of the, the section that, that the fissures keep coming.
Like night and day cutter. Talk about comparative. Look, I'm coming down that bell ranch. It's beautiful. It's like, oh, this is great. And I said, oh, let's take the shortcut to Kansas settlement. And you know, my F two fifty's bouncing all over the place. You know, cause it's, it's a, a stark difference there, but it's Bell Ranch.
And I.
Kansas settlement is gorgeous too.
Yeah, it really turned out nice. I'm impressed with Kansas settlement.
It, towards, it, towards the end, I know this isn't on you guys, it gets a little wavy. I don't know what that, is that from?
The side ends or subtle?
Yeah.
And that's what we fixed. A lot of that with the hot mix. So I took a big rig down through that road before and after this project was done. And you would have to hang on to everything in the cab going through it before we did the hot mix. And you can sit a cup of coffee on the dash now and.
Wow.
It's still got some weight.
Yeah, just a little.
But they're not obnoxious to the point.
But you fixed it. It was worse than that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just ten times worse than that.
Oh.
And just in case those guys are listening, which I know they're not, we cannot use tailings. They don't belong to us. They belong to Freeport. Macarant, which. Yes, we can't use the railroad stuff either because there's toxic, you know, they're toxic and you can't just put that stuff on a road because there's.
And we don't know.
And we don't own that either.
Yeah.
I don't know. We've never been really short on material either so much as.
And if you, and if you put material and fill up along the gullies, then it's gonna make it, you're gonna have a flood issue.
I mean, it's that.
It's time. Time is their problem, not.
And don't fill the gullies with rocks because then that creates flooding. They were talking about, I don't know why they would wanna do that, but. Yeah, I don't know. I went on that road. It was so good. I just think I don't know what I'm saying. So anyway.
All right.
Solid.
That was solid with you.
A fun one. This one's gonna be fun, guys. So. Supervisors, the reason it's gonna be fun is because we are going to have to have a tough discussion about raising a tipping. It's not all that scary.
So this was in addition to the increase that occurred from ADQ? Or is this because of ADQ?
Partially. So partially because of ADQ, but this will also take us back to the discussion we had at the, the roads meeting. You know, what the dollar bill has done. And I've got a slide in here that'll show you. It's.
So, so instead of seven bucks per truckload, you're gonna go to like eight bucks per truckload instead of sixty-seven dollars per dump. I'm not. You're gonna go to seventy-five dollars per dump truck? I mean, what are we talking?
Okay. So I'm not sure we wanna change our appendix A other than per ton. Uh, we had talked about changing the seven dollar truckload. We could look at dialing that in a little closer. But our bigger concern is that sixty-four dollars a ton. A lot of counties are at eighty dollars a ton, seventy-some dollars a ton. Uh, we did a couple of different scenarios and I don't, I don't know if you guys have been to an R A B meeting, but we go to these rate review by the board meetings. And it's the city managers coming together and we all sit there and talk about revenues and the expenses and everything solidly.
Most, most of these are commercial and municipal dump and garbage trucks, right?
Truck, the city dump truck.
Yeah, city, city and waste management and all those guys, right? Mostly.
So the super important things to look at on this one, if you look at that left sheet there. Uh, our payroll is actually not bad. Operations and maintenance, our O and M is, is, uh. Getting to where we're not putting enough away.
Percent increase right there.
We're not putting enough away for that. We're also not putting enough away for our heavy fleet equipment replacement. If you look at that bottom green bar where it says four dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's how much we're in the black right now per ton for the sixty-four dollar a ton charge. Last year, at the end of the year, that number was forty cents. We were only forty cents in the black. Now, the only reason that number isn't lower than forty cents right now.
Students carried over the, was it the five hundred K from the?
We artificially, it's artificially inflated because we're not pulling all of the O and M and all of the equipment replacement from. Fleet's not removing that from the budget yet. So we're holding that until towards the end of the year and then we'll play catch up. The reason I'm, that I'm doing that is because I'm trying to make sure that the tipping fee that we're trying to go for is the right number. Okay, we know that we're gonna be under forty cents a ton, but how much?
Which is ADQ, Mandy?
It's the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They, they, they mandate and control all of our emissions, air emissions. It can be, it's dust. It's exhaust.
I got, but they, they assess a fee. Isn't that the minimum? That you have to charge, cause that goes to them. And then you have to charge additional for us, right?
So we have a whole slew of things that we pay to them permitting. We pay.
What I'm getting, I'm getting at is it's all built into the sixty-nine dollars. What, how much of that is what you have to pay to ADQ?
Oh, it's not, it's not, uh, so we didn't break it down on the sheet.
Well, it's in the reg.
Yeah, it's rolled into it. It's not broken down. So it's a percentage of that sixty-four. I don't exactly what that is. It's actually small potatoes when it comes down to, um, what they're actually charging us. We've got the five million dollars. You know, or, or whatever. And when we get to the end of the day, forty cents a ton in the black is not a lot. This year, I think we're actually gonna be really close to the red. It all depends on how we end up at the end of the year. We did have some catastrophic failures. Where we had to spend some extra money that we didn't think we'd have to spend because we, uh, were extending the life of some of this equipment. But I have another slide here that I'll show you where we're projecting.
Hmm.
Okay, so this is a solid waste budget. What we did was a five year. And this is including, the top one is including the recycling to the existing tipping. What the R A V did was they requested we build this so that they could see what kind of tipping fee we increase we're looking at. They didn't want us to include recycling revenues in this because recycling is so unstable, especially right now. We're still making money with it, but it's, it's, it's unstable. So it's not a for sure revenue source. So we built two different sheets here. You can see one, uh, excluding recycling and one including recycling. The interesting thing is. You'll see that we're more in the red if we're recycling. The reason is, is recycling costs more.
Yeah.
Than not recycling. Yes.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna not recycle. In fact, we have to offer, by statute, we have to offer a way to reduce. Trash going in the landfill or some sort of recycling, something.
Well, what about, you know, there's been in the past where we burn, burn that stuff to generate electricity. Has anybody ever looked at?
Yeah, we, the, the county was approached with that a few years ago. It was before I was really involved in, uh, what I'm doing currently. But what it boiled down to was that we don't produce enough trash in.
Which is counted.
Be the electrical. We would have to truck material from Tucson to get it fed. Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Interesting, cause I think Douglas is getting a recycling fund. I think it could connect with what our, our P E T S or something like that. And I don't know, would that be something the county could connect with or anything? So recycling, I think.
We're recycling. So one of the.
You're recycling paper, right? Like cardboard?
We recycle a lot of things. And so that's one of the common misconceptions about what we do. We recycle steel, we recycle aluminum, copper, cardboard, all kinds of things.
Hmm.
Anything marketable, okay? The reason we do that is because we run it like a business. If we go in and start recycling things that are not marketable.
Hmm.
We're subsidizing it. And we're not doing that because we're already accepting it for sixty-four ton. So anything that's not marketable, we go and landfill it, you know? So if anything becomes marketable while we're doing this process, let's say plastic, all of a sudden we can start selling it. And either, either break even, cause even if we break even, technically we're making money and we're saving landfill space. We would do that. But right now it costs us thousands of dollars to haul one truckload to Tucson. Our recycling is so dirty that they would charge us so much money. Yeah, and some force of it wound up in the Los Realos landfill.
Wow.
And so it wasn't, it wasn't working. And so if we do get back into where we can recycle plastic. We would have to get, you know, get out there with training and everything else to our residents to break the number ones, the number twos, the number threes. But right now, even if we do that, it's not marketable. Part of the reason is because we're so far away from everything.
Hmm.
We're really out here ways. So all of our trucking costs are extremely high to get that lightweight material to Tucson. So we are recycling. They're recycling anything that's marketable. As the market shifts, so will we. And there's things that would go down to zero dollars a ton that we would probably still recycle just because now it's not going in our landfill.
We should, so I should break even.
Yes.
Okay.
So the R A V asked us to break this down two different ways. There's another slide that I'll get into in a couple of slides from now. That'll show what we recommend for the tipping fee. But as you can see here, with the recycling, which we do not have to get away from. We wind up in the red in twenty-eight. So that means we have to have this discussion now. We have to be ready to start looking at maybe a possible tipping fee increase before we do this next budget.
How much do you make from the, the transfer, not the transfer stations, like where I got, where I dumped my garbage out there, right? At the, off of Dragoon Road there, right? Where I paid seven bucks a truckload. How much do you make out for that? So you guys.
You're not even, I think, you told me last time, not even breaking even on that, right? You're losing money on those?
Yes.
Yeah.
They, they're a money loser. They're subsidized.
Yeah.
Currently.
The board supervisor subsidizes.
Yeah. You guys pay for that, um, so that you can keep those, uh, conveniences open for the.
It's a balance of encouraging people to dump their garbage versus tossing their garbage.
First, you're having to do cleanups all around the county.
Right, yeah.
Yep. And that's another reason to consider, you know, we're gonna have to really look hard at that appendix A if we wanna, you know, increase that seven dollar truckload or something. Cause it mostly affects those road sites. The sixty-four dollars a ton mostly affects the urbans.
When you go to the transfer station, they weigh me on the way in. They don't, even though I'm still. Dumping a truckload, right? Why do they do that? Just to know how much is coming in?
Nope, they charge it by weight. So you can actually get a charge that's less than seven dollars if you go to the urban site. So if you were on the scale and you weigh less than.
Hundred and sixty.
Thank you.
How much?
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty what?
Pounds. So if you dump less than a hundred and sixty.
Oh, I'm always over a hundred and sixty pounds. That's why I pay more when I go to Woodcocks, I guess.
Yeah.
So it takes, it calculates how much your truck initially weighs, but what's in the bed.
Yeah, they weigh you in and weigh. They weigh you in and then they weigh you out.
Ah, yeah.
And then they calculate the difference and that's.
Yeah, you could go in and just take somebody out of the car and go back out and they charge you that difference. Yeah.
Everybody gets out of the car.
That's what you do, yeah.
And that's where the, the weight that she was talking about comes in. So.
What you do is you have them run over to the transfer station. You weigh without them in there.
Right.
And then you have them jump in the car on the drive back.
Okay.
All right.
All right. But I mean, I, basically this really shows that, you know, recycling is more extensive, but we still wanna do the right thing. And.
But I mean, if you went to eight bucks a truckload, what I'm trying to get at is what would that do? Is it just a miniscule amount that it's not gonna impact much or is it?
It, it's gonna be very minimal.
So you would have to go by how much?
The, the question is, is it worth it? You know, pushing maybe the potential for people to go dump trash somewhere else? Or pissing off constituents, cause you raised their garbage thing a dollar? Or is it not worth it and just leave it at seven and try to make up the difference somewhere else?
I can tell you, everyone will notice.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone will notice the one dollar increase.
And you don't benefit, I mean, it's not that big of a gains, right?
We can run reports. We can let you guys know what that amount is when we go in to vote. There's also something else I'll touch on when, when we get there. But basically the R A V sent us back out to do some more digging on what the rate increase would look like at sixty-six dollars. That, you know, if they, if we maybe step into something or if we jump right to seventy and some different scenarios. So I'm gonna do a, a couple of different scenarios for the R A V. And then they'll make a recommendation to you guys on what the tipping fee should be. And then I'll let you know this is what the R A V said. And then you guys can, uh, ask as many questions as you want. We'll try to settle in on something.
January's coming.
Likely cities would then increase their fees to the city residents.
Yeah, and I think some of the cities already have. They were anticipating us doing this last year or the year before this, I think, year before last.
I know, Sarah.
He used to raise it again then. Blame the county.
All right, so this, this next, uh, bar graph is pretty simple, the green bar going across is the, is the price per ton right now we're charging. You see the expenses per ton exceed in every year from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five. Now you do see revenues pushed up to seventy-two, seventy-four, and even eighty dollars at some point. That is our unstable recycling that we were discussing. So, the reason we haven't had to increase tipping fees so far is really our efforts in recycling. And we're really taking a lot of metal up to Tucson and stuff, so we're offsetting that cost. The R A V really didn't want us to use that in, in our scenario, so we'll jump into that on the, on another slide here. All right, this heavy equipment replacement. Uh, I talked about O and M a little bit, what we need to do in solid waste is we need to increase our line for O and M so that we can make fleet happy and whole, okay? It goes the same way for replacement, so this is for our equipment replacement, our capital purchases, our stripper, our dozers, our water trucks and things like that. We were putting three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars here, but we're the fleet in the savings account basically to buy these things. Based on what we figured out with the dollar, right, now we have to contribute four hundred and twenty-five thousand a year to buy the same stuff we were buying five years ago. So I need to up that a hundred thousand, we need to up our O and M. And to do that, that's where we come in with a tipping fee, those are the only two lines that I see that we really need to adjust. Uh, the other ones seem to be pretty stable where we're at. This one touches on the equipment, uh, operation and maintenance, I talked about the O and M, the budget's the blue line, you'll see in twenty-five where operations and races totally exceeding, the expenses are exceeding revenues. All right, a solid waste budget, this is for the tipping fee that we ran the scenario on at sixty-eight dollars a ton, if we were to go from sixty-four to sixty-eight, this is what our budget would look like over five years. So you can see we're blacking, we're back in the black all the way through to thirty-one, pretty much. I really think we'll be in the black all the way to thirty-two, because what I did was I went back and I looked at what they did in two thousand sixteen, the last time they did it in, uh, an increase. And I modeled it after that. So if everything kinda tracks the same way as it was tracking throughout those years up to two thousand sixteen, we should be able to go very similar, seven, eight, maybe nine years before they would be talking about an increase in tipping fee again. And that's where I'd really like to be, so we're not coming back to the board every year with these scenarios.
For this surplus for these years for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you know, you're looking at a quarter million dollars, do you bank that or you log roll it into the subsequent?
So that would roll over.
So these are rollovers?
That, so basically like if you look at twenty-seven, that hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Oh, I see, oh, yeah, that's exactly what you're doing here, so you have the two fifty-five, you roll it in the next year and then you go, and then you're left with a hundred and thirty-three and you roll it in the next year, okay, I got you. So it's not, so when you get into the red again in thirty-one, it is a depletion of that surplus from twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Correct. But where I'm thinking is where we're gonna have, where we're gonna see that back in the black is we're gonna have caught this ahead of time if we make these adjustments now. And we're also gonna have quite a bit more, one of the things we didn't add in here is interest. Which is, we all know, solid waste, that's half some money.
Four and a half.
In several accounts that is making a, a pretty good chunk of interest, and so not counting that in there and letting that roll forward each time should help us, and I think that'll still be in.
Tradewick gets that, right, so you, do you bank that with her?
We book it, we book our interest, so it's.
Four percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then again, we did it including recycling and excluding recycling, so excluding recycling is still cheaper, but we don't wanna do that. So the scenarios they want us to do is, uh, basically where we hear it, one, one dollar at a time, maybe two dollars, three dollars. And then they also want us to see what the seventy dollar tipping fee would look like in these two spreadsheets. So we'll present that to the R A V at the next meeting. This next, uh, slide is our compaction study, this shows that we're constantly increasing in our compaction, you'll see that we're at one thousand sixty-two pounds per cubic yard. Basically, anytime you're over about nine hundred in Arizona, uh, you're doing good. Our goal is like twelve hundred, we're not there. We did get there a couple of times, a couple of years ago, we started a new cell and that will create some light uh, compactions, so I expect to see these numbers continually increase for the next two years. And basically what this number means is we're doing really good on our airspace and we're doing everything we can.
So you're expanding the lifespan of the.
Tremendously, tremendously, with just this little number.
You know how much, how many years you're adding?
So, over the last ten years, we should have added roughly at least five to ten years to the landfill. Yeah. And I really attribute that, a lot of it to the new compactor that we have, the guys are watering the trash. We're monitoring stuff, so if we do see something come up where we're not compacting enough, we make sure we add water, we make sure we roll it more, that kind of thing.
What, what's the projected lifespan now, what year?
It was seventy years originally and.
I mean, like, the, when, when's the Cinderella date? When it turns into a pumpkin?
You know, so it's changed every.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but right now, where does, where does it stand right now?
Like, like, I don't know, a couple of guards, that's probably a hundred years.
We hit, oh, so twenty-one, twenty, year twenty-one?
I won't be around.
No, not on the safety here, obviously.
But my goal is to leave this in a better place than.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and so, seeing these numbers improve from where they were two, three, four, five years ago, this is great to start seeing this kind of stuff.
Is the intent to bring it to greater, or is there gonna be a dome someday there?
It'll be a mountain.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, gradually goes up and then it'll come back down, and then we start new cells coming back on the east side. Going in opposite direction.
Okay.
Uh, these slides here are just Benson Transfer Station, we did some rehab. You probably remember we did some work in Douglas. Yeah, we did the same thing.
I want to try to go look at it, because it's Thursday and Friday, but it looked better, but the doors were open.
Yeah.
That's the way it's supposed to be, right?
On the residential side?
Yeah.
They should be closed on the residential side, there's not a door on the commercial side. But I know we had a customer hit one of the doors already, I think, and so.
Why should we charge? I mean, come on.
So I know that we've struggled with that in the past and will continue to struggle, but.
Okay.
Anyway.
Do you have somebody that goes, like, like the airplanes, you know, back it up this way?
We tried that, it seemed to work all the time. But the, th- these are just kinda piggybacking off of that, so we did the Benson Transfer Station. This work was all done by our facilities department, so we didn't contract this out, so I wanna give a shout out to them. Uh, we bought the materials and they used their labor to make sure that the building got patched up. Uh, same thing with the Sierra Vista Transfer Station, that thing had a massive gaping hole in it. I think it was seventy-five feet long and eight feet high, it's all enclosed again. All right, this, this quick slide is something that, uh, you guys will need to vote on at some point, maybe we can do that when we do the tipping fee increase. But what we'd like to do is change the hours of operation at the Adobe, Double Adobe Transfer Station. It's the only one that has these hours right now. And so we wanna mimic the other transfer stations.
And that would be the same, the ones, because mine is till two P M.
Yeah, so from what I understand, historically, this one was extended for a board member's opinion was to bring it to this other hours. And we just like to get it back to way, it matches all the others, it's so much easier, I've even had residents say, you know.
Yeah.
It'd be the same hours as all the other stations.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's, where is the transfer station, Double Adobe?
If you go down, uh, Double Adobe Road and you make a right instead of a left to go to, you know, to continue on Double Adobe.
Okay.
Right at Central, right there on the right.
So you make a, a right and you go down to kind of where the dirt road is?
It's right there.
I mean, no, it's good to know.
Uh, something that, uh, Joe asked me to mention when we were in the queue is the free dump base certificate application process. We were talking about that in the previous work session. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, we're still looking, moving forward with that. And if you got, I don't know if you guys wanna vote on that or not.
You was talking about how much, how the cost of just sending it out to every resident. And then they just throw it in the garbage, I mean, what was the cost, it was a pretty.
So we spent twenty to twenty-five thousand.
Now them out.
Yeah.
And how much do you get back? How many, how many people actually use them?
About eleven thousand, eleven to twelve thousand.
And you send down how many?
Forty, four, between forty-two and forty-five thousand?
Yeah, so a lot of them get thrown away.
And you thought, is there a mailing that the county does to residents that we could stick it in with it?
Or how about the light bill or the wire bill or that, I don't know.
Well.
The, the SSBC sent.
I know, I know.
Cool, and we don't have the addresses, we get them from the treasurer's office. By the time we get these free dump base things put together, so much time has passed, we miss residents that have just bought property and things like that. And we were looking at this new process. And we haven't changed it since I talked about it last time, basically the, uh, July, August, September, they could apply for it online, phone or at the transfer station when they're there, they can just fill out the thing and add it in.
That may be a better way to do it, just go on a website, fill in the thing and that's your one allocation that goes in that you.
What do you fill up?
The R A V really likes this system.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the residents have some skin in the game, they're asking for this and they know they'll use it.
So you give them, you're thinking of like three months to be able to show up, they're not like, most of those people don't have, they don't, they don't have a computer, right?
Right.
But they could show up during that, those three months.
And sell out the application.
And then be able to do either then or.
They can't do it then.
Okay, they have to fill out the application, okay.
Then it would go to admin staff, admin staff would determine whether or not.
They've already used it or not.
Right, or the criteria. The criteria still has to be met, so they still have to be resident, and have to have an address, non-commercial, all the things.
Okay.
And we wouldn't change any of the.
And then you would melt too.
No, that's the beautiful part, there's no mailing, we would just have a list at the transfer station, they ask for it and, and the fee attendant can literally go, okay, here's your dump day, go in and dump and we'll charge you for whatever you're over. Or, uh, you might just be told to have a nice thing because it'll be under the house ton, so. Really simple, simplifies everything. Administrative staff is super excited if we can make this work because they get just overwhelmed with all these cards coming in.
There's so much of it is wasted.
Yeah.
Uh, that's cool.
So, I wanted to touch on that, I don't, is that something that needs to go for a vote?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's an internal process, so if you guys are good with it, we'll continue going forward with that.
Yeah, and then just you let us know so we can make sure we announce it, put it on our different social media and stuff.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll advertise it like crazy, we don't wanna leave any residents out. So our idea was paper, Facebook, post it on the fish ads, all the stuff, you know, we'll get it advertised the best we can.
Because, yeah, there's a, you know.
Yeah, you can just, you can just hand a slip of paper to me when I go dump my garbage.
Well.
We'll start dumping garbage soon, but no, I think, um, yeah, and just make sure you let, as well, because I think there's some Facebook pages that I'm starting like the permanent, right, James and Al Missary, but people tune in that, Alfreda Rock, so, you know, but they don't necessarily go on the county website.
No, I, I, I mean, we're trying to make it good for everybody and.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the R A V is pretty supportive of it, you know, once they realize how easy it was and how many people it would probably reach to that really wanna use it.
Yeah. And get, what is the stamp with that acronym again? I'm thinking.
Oh, the R A V, so it's the Rate Review Advisory Board.
Okay.
So that's basically their job, a lot of their job is basically looking at exactly the financials, what I just shared with you. And then making recommendations to the board on what needs to change, perhaps, right?
That's all the city managers and myself.
Hmm, you city managers. From tourism to.
Yeah.
Well, that's my presentation for today, you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I was saying, any other questions for Mr. Fazio, Mr. Crosby, anything?
Yes, indeed, I have a few comments, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I appreciate the charts, it's nice to, uh, have those charts to forward to constituents to show them that there is indeed a plan when it comes to road maintenance. Uh, regarding the, the cities, I, I have known that, that the recycling loses money for a long time because I was on the city council and I used to see private recycling companies driving around suburbia where I live, but not lately. So, after people kinda got it out, out of their system, that they were gonna pay to save the earth, now there's, seems like there's fewer people ready to, ready to, uh, pay to save the earth. The other costs, oh, I, I was, uh, gonna ask Mr. Fazio, is oh, does O and M include personnel or did I miss the personnel slide?
O and M is, is, uh, separate from personnel, so O and M is basically what we pay to the fleet division uh, for their support on the equipment, uh, our payroll is a separate line, it is in that slide that I shared, but it is a separate line on there.
Okay, so I just missed that, I'm sorry. Uh, I would like to remind my colleagues that, uh, when we're talking about E R Es, which are typically, you know, the employee related expenses, that is a small portion of the pensions, that is, that's just the employee contributions and that does not include what the taxpayers are, uh, gonna be on the hook for, for twenty-five years or so after the employees are no longer with us. Did you have any comments on that, Mr. Fazio, about E R Es and pensions?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, I, I noted that, uh, even, I, I was not on the city council anymore after twenty fourteen and it was, the, the, the county's, uh, dumping fee was sixty-four dollars in twenty twenty-four. So it is indeed amazing that the, that the county has been able to, uh, keep that cost down for as long as it is. I al- I'm also very conscious that, uh, most of my constituents, it is the same people and in, in the case of Sierra Vista, it's gonna be the city that acts as the pass through for any, uh, any increase that happens, so I, I'm just, uh, I am aware of that. And, uh, when, when it, i- i- if and when it happens, it looks, looks like it's gonna be unavoidable. And I'm the one that, uh, is with many other concerned people about inflation. So, I, I, I just wanna take my hat off to Mr. Fazio and Mr. Nixon. And I wrote another guy's name down here, that was Mr. Steinberg, for their, for their diligence in, uh, in, in everything they've done. So thank you very much, gentlemen, and everybody else associated with, uh, keeping our rates low and reasonable.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments, Mr. Chair.
Hey, our, uh, next meeting is gonna be next Thursday, oh wait, no wait, December fourth, I'm sorry. At ten A M, in the hearing room regarding election verification. That's gonna be a fun, fun comment from some folks who will probably request to speak. Oh, and that's a work session, right?
Yeah.
Oh, so they won't be speaking, so it'll be the next meeting when they'll do the requests to speak to comment on this topic, which will be fun.
And one question, as far as the adding and dropping, when, when are we scheduled to make those decisions?
You know, actually, that's something I was gonna bring up in the highways section of this topic is, but you know, what I was gonna suggest to the board is, uh, and I had talked to Joe Casey about this, is just get with me individually. And, uh, we could look at some of the roads to add and drop that are on your, in your areas.
Okay.
And we can schedule a time to go out and drive the roads and look at the budget and just see what is viable and what's not.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
And then we'll bring it to a work session where you can all discuss it.
Going out with Jackie soon, you know, and I had actually done, it was so weird, gone out with my mother, could they do this tour my mom and dad used to do? And I saw these roads and everything, well, there's nobody on this, no houses on this road, so that was really helpful and actually going out and seeing it. So then I have no, like, I, I know what I'm dropping or I know what I'm adding.
And then how much it'll cost to add or drop or.
Right.
So, yeah, a- anytime you guys wanna do that, I think we were getting ready to schedule something.
Yeah, and I, yesterday was.
My, you know, I extend out to you two, uh, or Mr. Crosby. Uh, anytime you guys wanna look at some of those roads, I'd be happy to.
I, I believe I'm fairly familiar with the Mr. Fazio, so I will be looking forward to such a meeting. And, uh, we'll have it when we have it, 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 is there a schedule for the adding and dropping road, uh, at this time?
So one-on-one. So one-on-one, so you would schedule it, uh, I guess with, I guess Laura to set it up with Mr. Fazio for each of us to sit down and go through it with him.
Okay, I don't think that's necessary for myself.
Nope.
Uh, because I was very satisfied with, uh, what, uh, Mr. Fazio and uh, Ms. Watkins had come up with and, and I commented on that when we had our last meeting about that. Uh, how they were already on top of it, what people were gonna say, uh, they already were addressing the areas. Thank you.
Oh, how many, how many dirt roads does Ms., does Supervisor Crosby have?
I don't know, I'm talking my head.
Not very many.
There's, there's, there's a lot of roads. You guys have more, uh.
Yeah. All right, well, we got a, another meeting we gotta go to.
You and, yeah, you and I have a meeting.
Yeah, so with that, uh, see you guys on the fourth.
Thursday.
See ya. Richard.